Order. And if we could have a roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Attorney Murphy.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Gresham.
Present.
Ms. Hurst.
Present.
Ms. Bruno Naylor.
Present.
Mayor Sarno.
Absent.
He's on the way. He should be here in a minute.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have Stan for our pledge of allegiance. Ali Stammen.
It used to be.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So next, we are going to ask for motion. Ms. Mayor. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Do you need my seat?
No, no.
Just in time, Mr. Mayor.
Is your motion on the floor to go on executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, Exemption 2, for purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Teachers Unit A, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee.
Motion made by Vice Chair Naylor is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham.
We will return to open session.
Good point. Point of information, we'll come back in open session. Seconded by Ms. Gresham, roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes. Attorney, do I abstain if I don't go into executive session?
Yes. Well, you can vote to go in.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno.
Yes, word submission votes matter passes. Thank you. We'll see you shortly. Okay. We will. We will.
Okay, we're back and out of executive session. Thank you very much for your patience and understanding. We'll now move to the regular school committee agenda and on section three of the FY twenty-six budget update. First by CFO, Pat Roach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna start by giving an update on the teachers' financial proposal that we made. You know, we did a new scale in year one, including new placement for vocational teachers. Ninety percent of the members would be above three percent COLA with that. And to put that in perspective, I think Westfield's COLA is one percent, Wilbraham is one point seven five, Chicopee is two percent, Long Meadow is two point two five, and West Springfield is three percent. So we tried to be extremely competitive compared to our surrounding districts. We would also have three percent COLAs in year two, three, and four. I know the school committee has given us authority beyond that, but the teachers are really dug in on sick time, and we would really like to put the money into salaries. We can't do both. So we'd really like to go above what we have on the table, but you know, salaries would be our priority at the end of the day.
And as I said to some of the teachers that I walked in, you see many of our other surrounding districts that are facing layoffs, program cuts, and other adjustments occurring. We're working very hard to make sure that we continue to move forward, and whatever we put on the table is sustainable, is sustainable. And we do not know what other federal funding cuts we're gonna face, which in turn trickle down to the state, which in turn then will trickle down to the city and the schools on that. So, Mr. Roach?
Yeah, I mean, just to put that in perspective, many teachers also get step raises as well. You know, so some examples is a teacher on a master's step two, over the four years of the contract would get almost eighteen thousand dollar increase, which would be about thirty-two point three percent. A teacher on bachelor's step eight, or the term of the contract, would be about a seventeen thousand dollar increase, which would be a twenty-six point six percent increase. An ILS critical needs at the last step would start at ninety-eight thousand and would end at a hundred and eleven thousand for base pay. And a teacher on a master's with twenty-eight years experience would be about eleven thousand eight hundred dollar increase or a fourteen percent increase. We also put increases on the longevity scale. They ranged everywhere from five percent to twenty percent. We offered COLAs every year on athletic stipends and other curriculum stipends. Most of those haven't been increased in years.
Sir Roach, if I may.
Yes.
I understand. So in addition to step, they get COLA as well?
Yes.
Okay.
A step raise and a COLA raise.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Naylor?
In comparison to other districts, what does that look like as far as the step in the COLAs?
We're very competitive with the surrounding districts, and as I mentioned before, like, Westfield's one percent COLA, Wilbraham is one point seven five percent COLA, Chicopee is a two percent COLA, Long Meadow is a two point two five percent COLA, and West Springfield's a three percent COLA.
Westfield is currently facing layoffs in their school system.
And ninety percent would get above a three percent COLA on our offer. Ninety percent of the teachers that are on this contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Naylor.
You had some charts in front of you, which we weren't able to put up on the screen so everybody in the room could see it. Would you share those later on the website so that people can see those charts?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because usually we would try to put that stuff up on the screen.
One other thing, I guess sick time is a big concern to the members. They gave a lot of speeches and some impactful speeches. So we really tried really hard to resolve those concerns. You know, our proposal would be to put money into the, put days into the sick bank that would be available to go to those teachers, you know, that don't have a lot of, you know, years and haven't been able to build up their sick bank, or some of those members with, you know, medical needs. You know, those are the ones that we really see that don't have a lot of sick time in their bank, and that this would be really important for us to resolve. We haven't received a counter offer on that yet. We really think the sick bank proposal, you know, you know, we'd love to know where they're at and what they're looking for, but that's, you know, what we thought would be a really good concern, a really good solution there.
Patrick, on the overall budget, I know that a physical plant, I was just telling like the Miss Gresham and Dr. Danal too, that I think we're gonna have another ten schools online with HVAC, air conditioning coming out. We pumped in well over administration, billion dollars in rehabbing and building new schools. So I think another ten are coming online, and through Dr. Danal and yourself, I know that the majority of the money, it's, I think we're all six hundred and seventy-one million, nearly a one billion dollar overall city budget, is being really put toward work in the classroom. So thank you for the briefing on the update. Now, if there's any other questions pertaining to teacher contract, and we appreciate what the teachers do day in and day out. I'm sure we'll work to get to a plausible figure, but on the questions, if not, on the overall budget, you wanted to give a little bit of an overview?
Yeah.
If you're done with the teacher stuff?
I would, it's a budget hearing. Can you just give a high level overview of?
And then we're gonna.
It's been out there for people of you.
Absolutely. It's a general fund budget of six hundred and seventy million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That represents a forty-three million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollar general fund increase, which is a seven percent increase. That has to do with the Student Opportunity Act. We've pushed the majority of that money out to the schools, so the schools can do that in the school-based budget. We've also used it to make sure we have money to, you know, fund the teachers' raises and our other collective bargaining agreements. However, all funds, our budget's gonna be seven hundred, all funds includes grants and special revenue funds and things like that. Our all-funds budget's gonna be seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, seven hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. That represents a fifty-six million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollar decrease, which is about a seven percent decrease. So overall, our budget's going down seven percent. The majority of that has to do with the ESER funds that we received. We spent our ESER funds on one-time money, so there's not real cuts to that at the end of the day. Our budget's going down, but we're still gonna be able to handle our operations and everything we need to do.
And we huddled the city and school side teams some weeks ago with the federal cuts that continue, and things change every five minutes now. I don't want, if they wipe that out, it's about twenty, am I right, about twenty-six million? If they wiped out free lunch to all our students that need that, it's about twenty-five million. Am I correct?
Yes, yes. Lunch is a little higher, but.
And then some of the special, specialty classes would be about seven to nine million dollars if the Department of Ed decided to wipe those out. Am I correct?
Yes.
Any more overview, Patrick, or any questions with school committee members? Okay, hearing none, then we're gonna move to voting items.
Mister Mayor, I apologize. I was just remembering, one of the highlights from the subcommittee when we went through the budget was an area where we're focusing more on the special needs area and exceptional learners. And I know that's been something that we've continued, not just to hear from our educators, but also our parents and our parents. There's a really big concern, and there's a lot of really important dollars really focused in on that area, where we saw data about a month ago now that showed that there's a really higher number, increased number of students now that have additional needs. And so I really wanted to say, and we'll go through it more thoroughly next week, that I really commend CFO's team, as well as Dr. Danal and the chiefs for really taking a hard look at how do we address the needs of our most vulnerable students and the students with the highest need, and ensure that our educators have the support that they need to be able to do the work as, not as strenuously or as tedious as it doesn't need to be. And so we do appreciate that you all have paid attention to those things.
Thank you, Vice Chair Naylor. Before we go into voting, I pretend to Dr. Danal. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say at all?
No, nothing at all. I just always commend Chief Roach and his team because, once again, they have won a twenty-twenty-five award. They are an award-winning budget team, and we will make sure that we put your badge and your accolades online. We applaud you, and we appreciate all that you and your team do to ensure that you are holding us fiscally accountable and responsible for taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Just a comment from viewing public. The document itself is over, it's like an inch and a half thick. That was very quick overview. I don't want the public to think we don't get into the nitty-gritty. The Budget Committee itself and the whole committee gets right down to every single item. And obviously, we didn't review that tonight. It was out for people of view ahead of time. I just, sometimes when we go so quickly, people, I don't want people thinking we don't spend due diligence, because we certainly do. And the Finance Committee spent a lot of time on it.
That's a good point, Miss Collins. We say that many a times during our regularly scheduled meetings. The subcommittees will work for many hours, so many times you'll see things gavel through, because all the work has been done, and the, comes to the full committee on it. So thank you for bringing that point up. No other questions pertaining to the budget? Again, let's move to section four, voting items. A is a vote to approve superintendent's recommendation for the appointment of Assistant Superintendent of Community Engagement, Family Empowerment, and Partnerships. Superintendent Dr. Danal, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor Sarno. Good evening again, everyone. It's great to be here. Wonderful to see so many of our best and brightest educators in the room. We applaud our teachers, and we look forward to continuing to work well with you all, as well as encouraging you to work closely with the new Assistant Superintendent of Community Engagement, Family Empowerment, and Partnerships. It gives me great pleasure, and I can't contain my joy, to say that this individual, after a thorough vetting process, we definitely had several applications come in, because Springfield, of course, is a place where many people want to work and live. And so after a very thorough vetting process, after partnering with HR to ensure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, we found an individual who is well-known and well-respected in this community, who has opened the door for me and many of our partnership organizations, who has done his due diligence to build strong bridges from the classroom to the home and from the home back to the classroom, who supports streamlining processes and protocols to remove barriers and obstacles of our families and our students, and done a great job to empower our parents to help them recognize themselves as powerful partners. I speak of none other than Jose Escobano, and I present him to the school committee as my selection of Assistant Superintendent of Community Engagement, Family Empowerment, and Partnerships.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Danal. With any comments or questions from the school committee?
So moved.
Just a, just a comment.
Second.
When an individual has gone walk the walk, when they've been a teacher, when they've been an administrator, when they've been central office and been a principal, it's hard for others to match up. So I'm not surprised that Mr. Escobano would raise to the top of the interviewing committee, because the people who walk the walk know the job.
I'd have to say that that tenacity that Mr. Escobano, Assistant Superintendent Escobano, shows on that wrestling mat and coaching and wrestling really spells over to what you do for families and engagement and to our students, and that's extremely important. And as Mr. Collins indicated, working your way all the way up, you know, the ins and the outs on that. So this is a proud, proud moment, and I don't know if there's any other comments for school committee members? Or would you, Mr. Escobano would like to say, Vice Chair Naylor?
I would absolutely like to say something. First and foremost, I just appreciate all the work that you do, Mr. Escobano. We've worked together now for almost eight or nine years in the community, and one of the things that never left me was when we first met at Brightwood and how you knew almost every student and their family and their name, and they just loved you. And then when you went down to central office, the quick transition of not knowing anybody to knowing everybody, like overnight, it felt like, and having that first community engagement event that you led, and it must have been thousands of people that were there, and that was the first time that I've ever seen that many people show up at an event at Tower Square, or not Tower Square, Mass Mutual Center for the district, and excited and so many partners, and it was just amazing. But it speaks to your resilience, your intentionality of wanting to make sure that the community is engaged. And one of my heartstrings was the Parent Advisory Councils and the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And when you first got on board, you said, what is it that you would like for me to focus on? I'm like, get those parents in the room, and here are these parents, I have to say, because they know their kids and they know what we need to pay attention to. And you got right on it, and not because I asked you to, but because you understood the need was there. So I appreciate your love for the community. I appreciate your love for our families. And I am so excited about what you're gonna be able to do and what we're gonna do as a district under your leadership in this particular arena.
Yes, Ms. Hurst.
So, you know, I was not gonna say anything but to.
Yeah, you made a motion too.
Because you have to make a motion in order to talk, right, Attorney? Pay attention. So I just, I mean, I echo all of the sentiments that they've just shared, but I wanna take it back a bit further. I first met Jose Escobano when we were social workers at DSS. That's how far back, before it was DCF. And so to hear about and to see firsthand what you've done here in the district, but to think about the families that we worked with and the nuances and the dynamics that go into having to preserve and stabilize families, and to see you bring those skills here to the district, you are, you were made for this, and I'm so excited for you, and born and bred here in the city of Springfield.
Ms. Hurst.
Four-one-three. Four-one-three, proud.
Any other questions or comments? If not, with the indulgence of the school committee, Superintendent Danal, we could have Mr. Superintendent.
Do you want to take a vote first, so he can talk as he.
Well, I think, if I'm gonna make book, I think the vote's gonna go okay. Let's take motions on it was made by Ms. Hurst, seconded by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Miss Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Colonel Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno.
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Would you like to say a few words or?
Yeah, I just wanna first thank the community. Thank the families, thank the teachers, everybody that's supported me throughout the years. I really, you know, I'm really passionate about working with families and making sure that, that they understand their power and that they have a say in their students' education and that they're a part of that. Sometimes we forget, like, we're the experts and we wanted to do stuff, and there's sometimes a disconnect between what families think, feel, and what, you know, we do, and so bridging those gaps is very important. And on the, on the second part, you know, I'm very excited to really make sure that we strengthen that community engagement and that we have, you know, strong partnerships, not only in Springfield, but nationally. And really, my hope is that we bring national resources to Springfield, that we're bringing money back into the districts in grants and partnerships with philanthropy, and we strengthen those partnerships. You know, in economic challenges, you know, that we could potentially be facing, it's really about making sure that we have those strong partnerships with the philanthropy to fill those gaps. And so, you know, I look forward to continuing those partnerships and working, you know, with organizations across the country, here in Springfield, bringing resources back to the families in Springfield that need them. So thank you to everyone. Thank you to the school committee. Thank you to Dr. Danal for believing in me, and thank you for all the kind words. So thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Escobano. Now we'll move to B, vote to approve superintendent's recommendation for the appointment of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, Professional Development. Superintendent Dr. Danal, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, and Professional Development, again, went through a very careful vetting process. We conducted several interviews and even made sure we conducted a learning walk and observational rounds, because I wanted to make sure that this individual was able to speak to the needs of instruction and provide support to our office staff at Central Office, who then provide support to the teachers to move our teachers from good to great. And we already have several teachers who are already great, so we're just making sure that we put the icing on the cake with the development of this position of curriculum instruction and professional development. We wanted to make sure that we continue the training so that we can continue to make sure that student learning outcomes are second to none in Springfield. This individual is selected, is deeply loved, well-respected, well-known throughout the city. She has done a great deal of work at her current school of Brookings Elementary. I remember when she left Central Office to go to Brookings. Brookings was not the school back then that it is now. Brookings has received many accolades and awards under her leadership, and she'll be the first one to tell you that she is simply one of the many individuals in the building who has made the success of Brookings possible. Families love her and respect her. Students see her now, many years later, hug her and thank her for all that she has done for them. We're going to welcome you back to Central Office, Principal, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent Terry Poe.
Gonzalez, roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Colonel Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno.
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Congratulations. Here's the joy. Terry, I see that. I know school committee members would like to say a few words, so I'll open first to that.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just wanna say to Assistant Superintendent Terry Poe, we appreciate you. Congratulations. As a woman of integrity, as a woman of faith, your fruits speak for you and go before you, and make good testimony in this city about the leader that you are. So God bless you and congratulations.
Vice Chair Naylor, please.
I just remember you for so many years, just decades, loving kids and loving families. And I can remember it almost like it was yesterday after the tornado and all of the heartbreak that was experienced over there in that neighborhood. And you still were a ray of sunshine in the midst of all of that darkness. And the people, even in the neighborhood, everybody loves, I mean, my husband works at the barber shop over there. He's one of the barbers, and he's like, all they talk about is Ms. Poe and Brookings and Brookings is and Brookings is, and they're always doing this. Everybody wants to adopt Brookings, not just because of the kids, but because of you. And you showing people that there's a possibility for a community of folks that sometimes have been counted out. I used to live in that neighborhood, so I remember it very well. And I just thank you so much for just continuing to be a light, continuing to shine. It was like pulling you off the floor of Brookings to get you to come back to Central Office, because you were like, no, I never leave it. But we, we are so happy that you're gonna share your gift with the rest of the district, because they need it. Everybody needs your light. Everybody needs to feel what you feel and see the compassion that you carry when you lead. And not just aimlessly, but intentionally, looking at strategy, looking at how can we do better, how can we be better, and how do we ensure that our kids are gonna be proficient. So thank you.
Terry, congratulations. Again, you have earned this. You have walked the walk. And the empathy that you show towards your staff and your students is always on display. Every time your teachers come in to present annually on what they do, it's there. You're, you're the epitome of a principal, and you're going to be wonderful at this job. I'm so happy to see you come forward.
Congratulations, Assistant Principal, Assistant Superintendent. Yes, I get nervous because I'm excited. So, so many times you've opened the door for us in the community to come down. And everyone in the community know you and love you, and you're gonna do well, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
I couldn't look at you, because I saw you tearing up over there, and then I saw Ms. Naylor tearing up. And I was trying to hold my own tears in, because I do remember what it was like for you when the tornado hit. And you, you carried yourself with a tremendous amount of grace. And you were smiling, and you kept it so together, and you have continued to do that since that day to now. And so I am so excited for you, and I'm excited for us. And Dr. Danal, I just want to recognize you and your recommendations this evening and say thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is a special one for me, Terry. Families go way back. And your daughter and my daughter, my daughter was a spunky point guard, and your, your daughter was a center in the hoop team. But I have to hearken back to the tornado days, and we all on the front lines there. And what was accomplished when that tornado ripped through, and going to Reverend Stevie Williams and Carter in the street and, and there, and then giving you a word that we're gonna build, rebuild you a new Brookings School. And you kept that even in the modulars, you kept it all together. We all worked together. It was a can-do attitude. And you do have that magic touch when it comes to dealing with students and with families. And again, like Mr. Escobano and yourself, coming through the ranks. But if you wanna see someone that was tested, metal was tested, there are those tornado days, which will be coming on fourteen years now, June first, when we took that hit there. All we did was walk those streets sixteen, eighteen hours a day after that to make sure that people and students and residents and businesses had what they needed. But I remember Florence Street, and I remember the carts and everything, putting those kids to safety at that point in time. And I remember making that tour of your old school, when we brought Treasurer Steve Grossman out here and said, I need a new school, Treasurer Grossman. And, and now the beautiful new school, and Ms. Gresham is absolutely right. Like, madele, God rest her soul, we called, hey, Mayor, we need someplace to go on Saturday. We'd always open up the school. And now, when you look at your old Brookings School, which always had good bones, now it offered, we did housing opportunities for people, workforce development opportunities. So I was elated, and I wanna commend Superintendent Dr. Danal, when she had told me a little while ago that you two were gonna, had, cream has risen to the top, so very, very special, and we're very proud of you. So with tears coming down your cheek, if there's no other comments, the floor is yours. Madam Assistant Superintendent Poe, and tell Mo and the kids I said hello.
Terry, it's all yours.
Terry, it's all yours.
I'm going to keep my comments. But I just want to thank you all for this opportunity to serve in a different capacity. I have grown. The city of Springfield is responsible for the leader that I am today. I've taken advantage of every opportunity that I've been given as a leader. And I love my students, and I love my staff, and I will spread that love throughout the city. And we need it. We have work to do. So, I am committed to putting 110% effort into whatever is needed to get our students to greater levels of proficiency and to level on you teachers because you all work extremely hard to give the students what they need to be successful inside the classroom and out of the classroom. So, I just thank God for this opportunity to serve. And I am so happy to be working with Dr. Denal. She is an amazing leader, and I look forward to growing in a new capacity. So, thank you so much.
Giovanna, too. Giovanna, that squad, they're also here. I know, that's your baby there, too. Well, that's very, very good. I don't believe, the last thing, if there's any other questions or comments, now we will move into the public input pertaining to the budget. We have, I believe, eight speakers. You give it about three minutes apiece. Where are they going to be speaking from? Mike is there, so they can be seen.
Or you just want the camera?
Okay, so right here? Okay, and then we would ask you, please, to come up, state your, I'll call your, besides your name, your address, where you live. And then you'll have three minutes. And I see the first speaker is the President of the S E A, Tracy, Sazaniki Little. Tracy?
Man, am I supposed to speak after all that? Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Mayor Sarnum, school committee members, and Dr. Denal. My name is Tracey Little Sazaniki, and I'm the President of the S E A. We are here today to encourage you to revise the proposed budget to make our compensation packet more competitive with surround, surrounded communities. I'm here this evening to give the historical background as to how we have come today, with Springfield being the only district in the area besides Holyoke, who is in receivership to not have 15 days. Up until 2013, educators received 15 sick days, the same as all the districts around us. In the bargaining leading up to 2014, 2017, oh, hold on. 2014, 2017, contract, the district proposed a number of scenarios to cut the number of sick days. The initial proposal was employees will be credited with five sick days at the beginning of each school year. They will be accredited with one additional sick day per month. With that being the attitude the district had about educators having a reduced sick time benefit, the S E A was unable to fight back against any change and agreed to that what we have today. We are now fighting to gain back what we lost in 2013. The new language that was implemented in 2013 and continues to this day includes each teacher shall be granted 10 sick day leaves at the commencement of the school year. Any event that a teacher uses four or less than six, an emergency sick leave during the day, the course of this school year, inclusive of any days charged to the incurred bounds, they will be granted an additional five days disability of emergency sick leave on the days of the last days of school. The two business days will become personal days and will be taken from the sick day allotment. Personal days, bereavement, leave days, professional development, jury duty, and graduation leave will not be counted towards the four disability and emergency leave days referenced above. An employee who uses less than four days of sickness, F M L A, or workman's comp parental leave will receive 15 days the following year. But an employee who uses more than four days for the remedy of sickness, F M L A, workers comp, et cetera, will not count towards those days. This will need to change if we are to be competitive with the districts surrounding us when we're looking to retain, recruit, and entice new licensed educators to come and work in Springfield. To date, at the year of 2425, there are 291, and there are 218 openings as of April 1st, 2025. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Nahin, and I can't make out the last name. Hola? Colta? Please. And if you can give your, your address, ma'am, please.
For 159 Main Street, Wolverhampton.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the school committee, and Dr. Denal. My name is Shonin Katu. I am an M L L teacher at Benjamin Swan Elementary School. This is my 24th year teaching in Springfield. I'm here tonight to talk about how life happens for a teacher and encourage you to make our compensation package more competitive with districts around us. I have titled this testimony, "Life Happens," and did so in honor of my beloved father, a former educator himself, who once gave me words of wisdom, never put a career before your health or family. The 10 sick days that have been in our contract since 2012 are out of date, unrealistic, and impractical for teaching in the year 2025. In fact, it is punitive in its nature and acts as a deterrent for prospective teachers coming into S P S and retaining experienced educators in the district. In 2022, after battling cancer for months, I exhausted all of my accrued sick time for use and paid medical leave. Since then, it has been almost impossible to accrue time from year to year due to a variety of reasons that I will further highlight. Without being able to accrue time, I've worked without pay when I've had to call out sick. The 10 sick days have not been sufficient and have been detrimental to my financial situation, physical health, and mental health. Here are some of the reasons that I have used 10 sick days in the past that not only speak for myself, but for the many teachers that are faced similar situations. One, personal illness, COVID, flu, allergies, arthritis, viruses, and the common cold. Two, doctor's appointments that cannot be scheduled during summer months or vacations due to insurance regulations. Screening appointments such as MRI, bone density, lab work, ultrasound, diagnostic mammograms, and biopsies. Family illnesses, taking an elderly parent to a doctor's appointment, going to a hospital to visit a family member, supporting a family member that has been diagnosed with a chronic condition. Weather-related emergencies, for example, schools delayed due to a snowstorm. However, your car is frozen, the roads are dangerous, and the driveway is not clear of snow. Finally, and unfortunately, in the reality of working in today's classroom, there are many days that you wake up after an extremely challenging previous teaching day, and you know that you just can't go in. The previous day you have been pushed, shoved, sworn at, had items thrown at you by a student, evacuated the room three times for crisis for safety reasons, and left the building in tears. And the following day, you decide that you need a day, a day that you need to just breathe and regulate your fried nervous system, a day to reset and try to remember why you keep working in these conditions, a day to feel normal before returning to work. As a result of using all the sick time of 10 days, there have been consequences that are not just financial. I have been forced to reschedule doctor's appointments in order that I do not lose the pay, therefore jeopardizing my health. I had to tell family members that I can't support them during their own medical situations because quite simply, I was out of sick time, and I could not afford to lose the money. And despite all these reasons that only detail a few, I've continuously showed up to work whenever possible, continued to work a longer year than teachers in other districts, continued to work an hour longer daily than teachers in other districts, and have more demands and stress than other districts. I am often asked by family and friends, why do you stay working in Springfield when you could be hired easily in a surrounding area? This question has been increasingly difficult to answer. So, now I will ask you, members of the school committee, why should I stay working in Springfield? What is the incentive to work under these conditions when there are better benefits in surrounding areas? May is Teacher Appreciation Month. It is my sincere hope that the testimonies you have heard previously as well as tonight do not fall on deaf ears. Let these life stories resonate with you to make the changes that are necessary for a fair contract. Please show your appreciation and respect for our profession by valuing our needs and make us more competitive with the surrounding communities. Life happens. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Susan Edwards, please.
I've only used about four, six days, so I have to keep pouring my mask.
Please, your address, Mrs.?
It's 122 Knollwood Street.
Thank you.
In Springfield. Yeah. Okay. So, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Susan Edwards, and I'm a 30-year veteran of Springfield Public Schools. As such, I'm uniquely qualified to speak out on how the change from the 15 guaranteed six days to 10, with a chance of earning perhaps five, has harmed our teachers. This harm is especially true for parents of young children, those with chronic health conditions, and those who must care for ailing or elderly family members and parents. An employer I worked for before I started S P S was impressed with my work after my first year and wanted to give me a raise. I immediately said, oh, no, don't give me a raise. I need sick days. Because I had a baby that was 10 months old at the time. As a mother of three children at the time, one teenager, one in grade school, and one that was a toddler, I knew that would be of more value to me. Once hired with S P S, I truly valued the 15 sick days per year I now had at my disposal, but I used them sparingly. As every teacher knows, teaching is the one profession in which it is more work to be out than it is to just tough it out and go in. It was a good thing. Thank you. I've toughed out a lot of them. It's a good thing that I had 10 to 12 years of service behind me, and I had built up a solid bank of unused sick days because I would soon begin to need them. When we had 15 sick days per year, my family, myself, faced a multitude of health scares and struggles. I, I am a cancer survivor of 18 years of leiomyosarcoma. It afforded me plenty of time and allowed me to focus on those events and not having to worry about being, being covered in the future. After 2013, all this changed. We now had a measly 10 sick days. And if you use more than four days, you could only accrue what you had not used that year. I watched my sick time dwindle. As my parents aged and needed more help to go to appointments and had multiple, multiple hospital stays, I had to take out an intermittent F M L A for four years. I was now dangerously low on sick time. Then COVID hit, and now I was completely out of sick time. After an accident, I fractured my ankle, and then I used up all my sick time. I was, I asked H R what would happen if I would be out, and I was told that I would have to pay back my insurance for that time, and it would cost me $400 every time I was out. So, I was not out that entire year. I tucked it out. I teach at a small school, Public Day Elementary. It's about 25 teachers in Unit A. And I personally know of four teachers who've had to pay back $5,000 or more during a year because of their loss of sick time. One that I know is working three-quarters pay for the second time in three years after having her second child. Most teachers are not abusing their sick time. In a world of increasing pathogens in which teach, children are sicker, parents are living longer and need help from their grown children with more, and more needs and chronic personal illnesses, we need to be competitive. And when the one way we're going to do this, we're one of the only districts that only has 10 days or less. So, I ask you to please consider giving us more. Thank you.
Cynthia, I think it's Cynthia Farmer, please. Please state your address, Ms. Farmer, too, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarnum, members of the school committee, and Dr. Denal. My name is Cynthia Farmer. I now live in Chickity, but my children live in Springfield. I raised my children in Springfield Public Schools, and my children raising their children in Springfield Public Schools. I am here to speak to you tonight about some background and requests of the school committee's budget reflective resources needed to provide a fair compensation in packages to ensure that Springfield is able to compete with new educators each year. I am going to talk about the number of educator openings we have this year. This contract covers 2,357 positions. On 7/15/24, there were 339 open positions, and we have hired 291 new educators this year. On 4/1/25, there are 218 open positions. This means 17 pre-K classrooms do not have regular teachers. Six are pre-K links classrooms for autistic children. Five kindergarten classrooms are without regular teachers. 52 grade one through five classrooms do not have regular teachers. We are short 60 special education teachers. This includes teachers of 13 links classrooms, seven SEBS classrooms, and three primary learning centers. We are short three speech and language therapists who provide the speech services required for student I E Ps and the list falls on. And for another 81 other positions, including counselors, R O T C instructors, and vocational teachers. 92 of the open positions are filled by teachers of record, those being paraprofessionals who have been taken in to be teachers, most without the educational level required to be the teacher. The other 126 positions are filled with substitutes or other educators covering classrooms. These openings affect the quality of education we can provide to our students. These openings put a strain on everyone in our schools, students, educators, and administrators. We need to have the best working conditions and compensation package to ensure us a desirable place for educators to come and work instead. I started as a paraprofessional in 1984. I have been in and out of Springfield Public Schools for a very long time because I believe in their system. So, I, there's nothing against paraprofessionals being teachers in the classroom because many times we know that that's who's holding it together in the classroom. I've also substituted in Springfield Public Schools. So, I understand that substitutes, what they walk into every day, and I always say in kindergarten, they see sucker to written on your head however, I do understand that. But we're talking about not only hiring teachers, but maintaining and retaining the teachers to stay in Springfield and to invest in our community and our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Next will be Emily Vigno, please. And if you could state your address, too, please.
59 Springdale Road in Westfield.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarnum, school committee, school committee members, and Dr. Denal. My name is Emily Vino, and I am a speech-language pathologist in the district. I was asked to speak here tonight by the school committee because I was considered passionate about the issues that we are facing in our district. And I am. I am passionate about evaluating students and diagnosing students and providing our students with quality services and helping them reach their goals. But I am also tired. Each of my colleagues and I are doing the work of two speech pathologists and speech assistants in any other district. On average, we see over 25% of the students in every single one of our buildings. With caseloads well over 100 students for most of us, we are unable to provide students with the quality of service they deserve. Alone, I have completed 87 evaluations this year. My assistants are seeing students in groups of five and six. It's a district-wide standard, and nobody on our caseload is making progress with those kind of group sizes. We have had at least three S L P positions open this year and are so understaffed that we received an email recently asking us to pick a week to cover a building without an S L P, or would we, we would be assigned a week. This means that I need to leave my caseload of 100 students for a week, supervise an assistant that I've never worked with before, and attend meetings for students I have never met. And while I'm doing all of that, my students are without for the week. My evaluations at my own building are on hold. Excuse me, my meetings are on hold. Everything gets put on hold, and I have to play catch-up when I get back. Everything gets put on hold, and I have to play catch-up when I get back. My grievances about that aside, think about the lack of quality in the services I just described. We are merely checking a box that a meeting was held, an assistant was supervised, and evaluation was completed, all for students we have never even laid eyes on. As a parent, if I found that out, I would be furious. But the fact of the matter is, we do not have enough staff to cover the amount of students needing speech and language services. We have had open positions since at least the first of this year, three of them, and the district has agreed to open up two new positions for the fall, which is appreciated. However, with seventeen new Link's classrooms opening, those two positions don't even cover those seventeen rooms. And that's just S L P positions. That doesn't cover S L A positions, who are the ones providing most of the therapy to these students under our supervision. Plus, we are still down the three positions that could not be filled this year. We need more staff. I have worked in this district for eleven years, and I have never seen the morale in my department so low. We can't seem to fill the positions that are open, and we are losing all of the qualified staff members that we have. The students we see, as you know, are all special education students, and they can be challenging. They have severe speech and language deficits. They have academic behavior, emotional challenges. Couple that with the fact that we are seeing well over one hundred of them every week, it's exhausting. And for a new hire or potential new hire, that is a daunting task and, quite frankly, not appealing at all. We have already been told that capping our caseloads is not an option. So the only way to get our caseloads down to manageable numbers is to hire more staff. The problem is Springfield is no longer an attractive district to work for. I can travel thirty minutes east to Worcester and get a pay raise and a caseload cap. I could go a little further to Boston and get an even bigger raise and an even lower cap of forty-five students. Even Hartford capped their caseloads at forty students at the elementary and secondary level. Yet we're still seeing over one hundred kids. For a new hire, that is a no-brainer. We need to make the district an appealing place to work again, a place that draws in qualified staff members and that values their current staff members enough to pay them what they're worth to keep them here. Our compensation package will not help us get new staff members here. That means we will continue to have sky-high caseloads that grow every single year, not just in number, but in intensity as well. We will continue to be overworked and overwhelmed, and we will begin to search for places to work that value us and know our worth as professionals. The bottom line is, we need more staff to help bring our numbers down. We deserve to be paid what we are worth, and most importantly, our students deserve qualified teachers and service providers who can support them and help them reach their full potential. The time to compensate us at a level that we deserve and make Springfield an appealing place to work again is not a few years from now or in the next contract. It is right now because we are going to start losing more and more staff members, and we need them desperately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vigno. Kristy Turkot, please. Please indicate your address, too, please.
Twenty-six Connors Cove.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the school committee, and Dr. Danal. I thank you for allowing me to share some thoughts with all of you today. My name is Kristy Turkot, and I am proud to be one of the thirteen autism specialists that we have in this district. I'd like to start by saying how very blessed I feel to come to work every day to do a job I love. I work with staff and students that sometimes feel more like family, and for that, I'm very grateful. But that being said, I know that's not why we're here tonight. Here's what I'm wondering. Don't we want the city of Springfield to be an attractive and sought-after place to work? To attract and keep qualified educators year after year? It isn't right now. Our teachers get less sick time and make less than almost all of the surrounding districts. We need our fifteen days back. There's no way that we can compete with other districts. I don't know about anyone else, but I can't coordinate the days that I get sick with the same days that my kids get sick or during an already scheduled time off. We service an incredible number of special education and medically complex students, not to mention students who need a significant amount of social, emotional support every single day in order to just function. We need more than a small pay increase that barely covers the cost of living, or we are simply going to continue to grow this incredible teacher shortage we already have in this district. We have so many teachers of record running classrooms, and most of them are really pouring their guts into their students. I know that we are thankful for them and for stepping up, but they need our help. I am currently supporting twelve Link's classrooms in three buildings, which is ninety-six students, and a number of other students and classrooms across five other buildings. Of those twelve rooms, six of the teachers are either first-year Link's teachers or teachers of record. That is half of the people I work with. I would love to spend as much time as needed with them, but the reality is I'm being pulled in so many directions that I sometimes wonder if I'm really helping anyone at all. Our responsibilities are growing every year. This year, we have around one hundred and sixteen Link's rooms across the district, and next year, we're getting seventeen more. How are you going to lessen the load for us? We can hire more autism specialists. How can you hire more of us? You pay us what we're worth. You ensure our compensation is comparable or better than other districts. You guys tell us that you appreciate us and all the work we do. You say that our experience and expertise is valued in this district. Please show us because most of the time, we don't feel it. Thank you.
Christopheri, please. Please indicate your address.
Glenn Drax, I'll speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Christopheri.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Anne Marie Christopheri, and I am one of the eight behavior specialists that work for the district. I would like to also begin by saying how honored my colleagues and I are to be able to come to work every day. The staff and students we support hold very special places in our hearts, and we agree with Kristy and all the others that spoke tonight that they do feel more like family. Like many of the specialists in the district, we started out as paraprofessionals and/or teachers. We were supported by colleagues who specialized in curriculum, I E Ps, how to implement accommodations and modifications, best practices for classroom management. They provided interventions for behavior, social, and/or academic needs. They specialize in specific disabilities, behaviors, emotional counseling, and types of other types of community services. These colleagues specialized in best practices for trauma-informed care or speech or vision, hearing, O T, P T, adaptive P E, and adaptive technology devices for our students. We work, we look to them for support, guidance, advice, suggestions, materials, visuals, and to model these best practices and to train us. And they did, and they did this because they were considered specialists in their fields. They receive specialized training and professional developments. They provide professional developments to the many teachers that we work with. I was inspired by them to learn more, be more. I wanted to help support new teachers starting out just like me. When I started in this position three years ago, after four years as a S E B S teacher, the district employed ten behavior specialists. We currently have eight behavior specialists, which subsequently is increasing our caseloads. We are the smallest cohort in the district. We support every school in the district through our student of concern meetings for general education students. That's forty-one schools across the district. We average four to eight buildings each. We are all attached to three to seven S E B S classrooms also. We are comprised, I'm sorry, we are considered specialists in our fields. We are called upon by supervisors and colleagues to observe students, classrooms, and teachers to offer our professional opinions and advice on a daily basis. We support, model best practices, and encourage veteran staff, new staff, teachers of records, and paraprofessionals. Unfortunately, we and so many other specialists and educators are not compensated for our additional training and the expertise we provide. Sadly, this means that Springfield is becoming an unattractive place to work. We aren't drawing in or keeping qualified educators or specialists. We need to do better for our students. With the increasing rise in need of support for students' social, emotional well-being, we, as a district specialist in this field, are asking fair and equitable compensation that sustains qualified specialists and educators. Thank you.
Last but not least is Brenda Dunn. Ms. Dunn, please. Please indicate your address, Ms. Dunn.
Eighty Munrode in Munson.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the school committee, and Dr. Danal. My name is Brenda Dunn, I'm vice president of the Springfield Education Association, and I'm now a teacher at Kylie Brown. I have a thirty-five-year relationship with Springfield Public Schools, first as a parent, then as a lunch mother, and then as a paraprofessional, and then in two thousand and five as a teacher. So, yes, my long relationship here. I am here to present some data. Could you mind?
Sure.
About the fact that our compensation package is not competitive with surrounding districts. So right now, we are competitive in the yearly starting salaries, but at step ten, we start to fall behind, and after step twelve, we quickly fall to last. And I'd like to bring to your attention that seventy-four percent of our staff is at step twelve or beyond, right? So, or higher. So that's the majority of our staff. In addition, we are not competitive in a number of ways, as shown in this chart that you should have in a moment. We work a longer year than the surrounding communities. Our daily pay rate at step twelve is below all of the districts around us. Fed Ludlow by one dollar, we get them by one dollar. We have fewer sick days than all of those districts. Our starting master's level is competitive with surrounding districts. Our step twelve, the highest level on the salary scale, is below all of the communities but Ludlow, and again, seventy-four percent of our staff is there. Our lifetime earnings are projected to be the lowest of all of those districts. And as you can see, we have Springfield, teachers work one hundred and eighty-eight days. The daily rate based on step twelve is four thirty-seven twenty-one. Number of six days, ten, fifteen, if you can earn them. Starting masters is fifty-five, four oh one. Highest masters level is eighty-two, one ninety-six, and lifetime earnings, two million, two hundred seventy-two dollars and two thousand, sorry, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then I'd like to point to, like, you can read the chart yourself, of course, but I would like to point to some of the other salaries here. So say, like, in Long Meadow, a lifetime earnings for a teacher there would be two million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So as you know, receiving fifteen days in the next year is contingent on using four or fewer or fewer sick days during the school year, not counting the four days of, of course, bereavement days, jury duty, personal days, if approved by principal, graduation. Included in the four are workers' compensations days, parental leave days, regular sick days, and F M L A leave days. The lifetime earnings here were projected by the M T A using the following assumptions: that thirty years of service, five years at the bachelor's level to receive a master's degree, earn six credits a year on an ongoing basis, so able to move over the lanes based on earned credits above a master's. In Springfield, there is no movement for credits earned beyond a master's until one receives a CAGS or a second master's. Other districts around us have more columns based on earned credits. So as part of the years, the financial year two thousand and twenty-six proposed governor's budgets. This is the first year of implementing the Student Opportunity Act funding. This act makes significant changes to the Chapter Seventy formula based on the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Committee. The funding is targeted to help enhance core instruction, provide additional student support, assist in talent development, and overall provide conditions for students to succeed. We believe that the Student Opportunity Act money provides the district with the funding required to make Springfield compensation better than our surrounding communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Thank you to all the speakers. We appreciate your passion and emotion. Speakers, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice Chair Nair is the second.
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Gresham. All calls as required. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jerry Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Peron-Diller?
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient amount of passes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening and good health. God bless.